To get started?
Be, appear to be, yes.
We have a quorum Cindy?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, it is a little bit after six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. Let's call the Johnson City Council Work Session Number 20-21 to order. Cindy Roll Call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here, here.
Evans? Evans?
Yeah, here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
He says he's muted.
I'm here. I was muted.
There he goes.
And Soroka? He's here. Let me find him, see if he is muted. I do not see Scott. Just seconds, got all unmuted here. And Soroka?
Hello, here.
Okay, we are all here.
Fantastic. I will go ahead and read the COVID-19 statement due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19, 2020 proclamation, suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The City of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. The first item that we have on the agenda this evening is a closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.51(c) to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the government body in that litigation. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move.
I move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
He's muted again. There we go.
Martin?
Yes, yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
He's muted again.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Hey, we are.
Can we get, can we get, can we get, can we get?
Can we get, can we get? Evan?
Muted the whole meeting.
Yes? Okay, we're gonna move to a breakout room here, so hold on just a moment.
Do we have everybody on board?
Uh, not quite. Uh, I believe we do now.
We do now?
Believe so.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next item on the agenda then, and that is presentation on the final design concept for 86th Street Side Path. And who's gonna take this one away?
My name is Corey Shannon with HR Green. I'm here to present for John and myself.
Okay.
And Mayor, this is, this is John. Like to start with just a couple words. First of all, I want to thank Corey and the entire HR Green staff for all the work they've done on this project, getting the design concept to where it is right now. We've been working for, oh, about a year and a half on this project, getting the design to, to the point that we have it now. And the key components were really the public meetings that we had a year ago, working with the Homeowners Association, with Green Meadows West. We've had several meetings with, with their board and getting the input on what the residents would like to see with this project and some key components. And then working with the park board, obviously, as well, and making sure that everything progressed the way we wanted to see it. So Corey's done a lot of work with this, and I really appreciate all the work that they've done. And I'll turn it over to Corey to give you a feel for what the design concept of the trail will be.
All right, thank you, John. Cindy, did you want me to share my screen, or what would work best?
That's fine, that's fine, Corey. If you want to do that, I'm happy to let you do that.
Okay. Make that happen.
Let you do it.
All right, are we seeing my presentation here?
Yep.
Great. All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you to members of council and the city for having me here, as John mentioned, to discuss the Northwest 86th Street Side Path Project. As John mentioned, over the past year and a half, we've been working together. And I echoed what John would say in that we, I think we've really gotten a lot of good public involvement to really come up with a good project that's gonna be a great amenity for the city. Myself, Corey Shannon, I'm serving as the project manager with HR Green, responsible for the design and project management of the consultant team. Had a really good working group on this with especially John Schmitz since last July, and very much looking forward to getting this project finally out to bid and construction in the spring. So this project was identified in the 2018 Johnston Walkability Study as a significant opportunity for improvement to expand pedestrian and bicycle opportunities in the community. The main objectives of providing this infrastructure are first, improve connectivity with just completing the network of pedestrian facilities throughout the city. Enhancing safety is another primary goal through providing safe crossings and location of the side path. And then just making it an enjoyable, user-friendly amenity for the general public. So as we know, 86th Street is a primary arterial roadway heading from the southern limit to the city near I-3580, heading up now towards 70th and further. It was identified as an ideal location for having improved access connectivity and safety for, by providing improved pedestrian infrastructure. Primarily looking at wanting to have that connectivity with facilities on both sides of the street. So there's existing sidewalk on the west side of the street. This, the side path will exist on the east side of the corridor from Northwest 54th Avenue all the way up to 62nd. This provides connectivity to the trail network that will extend west along Northwest 54th, through the other facility, the other network through the Greenwood Hills Park, east-west along Northwest 62nd Avenue, and eventually along 86th Street north of 62nd as future plans show a connection towards the Green Meadows North neighborhood and the Beaver Creek Trail Systems. So what we're seeing here is kind of a rendering of how this project will lay in with, this is at the Windsor Parkway intersection. So Jethrose and the commercial developments would be just off to the top left of the screen here. The, the main focus is obviously the, the side path, the 10-foot-wide side path, which will exist on average at least 10 feet or more away from the road to provide that clearance for users. In addition to the shared use path itself, we'll also be providing significant improvements at all of the signalized intersections. So along with updated ADA-compliant curb ramps, we'll also be upgrading the pedestrian traffic signal equipment to utilize updated crossing displays that show a countdown timer as well as some noise indications for, to make them a safe, safely usable for all users. We've also identified some strategic locations along the corridor where some retaining walls will be constructed in order to prevent significant impacts to the adjacent property. These mainly, the primary ones here will exist in front of the neighborhood residential development, a little bit to the, to the right side of my current view, directly across from the Greenwood Hills Park where there's a primary drainage way. Another drainage way is a little bit further to the north here off my screen, across from Jethrose. And then the main, another drainage way at the Foxborough Business Center. Finally, we also looked at some ways where the city's project here can help address some of the concerns from the adjacent residents and the Homeowners Association of Green Meadows West. Their primary concern, as, as we heard in several public meetings, was the condition of the existing evergreen tree screening along the back sides of their properties that border 86th Street. What you're seeing on the screen here is a little bit of a, basically a privacy berm that would be graded where the trail does back up directly to those properties and helps give them some, some privacy screening. This, this all generated out of gathering a lot of public input from the Homeowners Association and residents. The primary concern is obviously, you know, just the condition of the evergreen trees over the years has deteriorated to a point where there's, there's a lot of visible sightlines from the roadway directly into those people's properties. It was a concern that was voiced rather heavily at our, at our first public meeting, and we took that back, you know, thought on some things, had some conversations with the HOA, and developed the concept for the privacy berms that we feel will, will really address those concerns for the residents. This is a kind of a street-level rendering of what that would look like there. It'd be about a five-foot-tall privacy berm, and then the HOA would then have the ability to, to plant those with whatever landscape features that they or residents would like to see there. And I just, I really think that what we've, we've done with engaging the HOA, the, the property owners, looking forward to some future property owner engagement, has really gotten a lot of buy-in from, from all of those, all of those users. And frankly, the HOA is very excited about having these berms in place, the ability that they can have to do some plantings there and, and make it a much more, much more visually appealing area for the community. So we've had several important milestones over the past year, going back to our first public meeting in November of 2019, around the time we submitted preliminary plans. We had subsequent meetings, as John mentioned, with representatives from the HOA, City Council, and City Administration in mid-November. We presented to the Green Meadows West HOA Annual Meeting and, well, to the Board of Directors in January and February. And as I mentioned, all these fostered a great sense of engagement and has led to a very cooperative relationship with respect to adding some components into the project for the HOA and in return, working towards achieving the project goal of donation of the right-of-way that would be needed for the project through the HOA property, which consists of over half of the total length of the project. We are now at the point here at the end of October, 1st of November, where we have submitted preliminary plans, or submitted final plans, pardon me, looking towards an ordering of construction here tonight at the following council meeting, and then looking towards a November 24th bid letting. You'd get a contractor under, underway after that and have utility relocations and construction beginning in the spring of 2021. With that, I'd just like to, again, thank the city for the opportunity to partner with them on this project. I think we've, we've got a really good piece of infrastructure in place here that's gonna serve a lot of residents and businesses throughout this corridor and provide a safe, safe, user-friendly trail component for, for the years to come. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or...
Corey, I have a couple of questions. But first of all, thank you, thank you for this presentation. It looks like, I mean, it's obvious that you've put a lot of good work into this very deliberative process and have involved a lot of the stakeholders, the residents and the Homeowners Association in Green Meadows West along the way. And I really like, I really like what you've presented to us this evening. I think this looks really good. Just a couple of quick questions. It sounds like there's been a lot of engagement as this has been developed. Are we certain that all of the homeowners that are along 86th Street there, that will be directly impacted by this, that they're, they're on board with what's been proposed?
That at this point, we, so we have just most recently met with the HOA board members last week, and they are in the process of determining how they're gonna present this back to the homeowners.
Okay.
I believe they were considering having a sort of informal meeting. I believe they have a board meeting here next Tuesday, and they were gonna take that back to the larger board, develop a decision for when they wanted to engage those property owners. But... So that is still something that we plan to take as, as a next step.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I live in that neighborhood, and I've watched the trees grow and then deteriorate, and, and it's time for them to, for, time for most of them to move on to their next life, whatever that might be. So I think, again, I think what you've proposed here is, is a, a good, good approach to putting the trail in. The other question that I have is, the planting, is that something that the Homeowners Association wants to take on? They're gonna take responsibility for the plantings and, as well, maintaining them and the cost? Is that correct?
Yes, that's the, in the conversations that we've had to date, that we would grade the berms as part of some of the earthwork with our project. At, you know, this time next year, we would ideally be planting those with like a temporary seed in order to meet all of the regulations that we need to meet for our project. And then at that time, you know, they would have the opportunity to go back there and, whether it's plantings, or irrigation, or lighting, or whatever they decide is in their best interest.
Okay, and they're, they understand that?
Go ahead.
They understand that and they're agreeable to that?
Yep. Yeah, what they, the board has come to us with, they've been saving money for a couple of years now with the idea they were going to take care of all the pine trees themselves. So this project is gonna actually save them some money as far as not having to deal with the removal of those pines. So they're very excited to be able to go in there and do the landscaping to give themselves a little bit of time so that they can, can decide specifically what the landscaping's gonna be and that they don't have to rush it. So the feedback that we're getting is they're very appreciative that we'll get the ground all, all set and ready and that they can then really develop a, a good plan for themselves to how the landscaping looks, whether it's grasses and trees, or, or what direction they go with it.
Okay.
It's really been a win-win with this situation, because we're able to obtain more right-of-way necessary for, for the, the trail project or the, the construction of it. And like I said, they, they actually get the trees removed at no cost to them that they would have had to pay for. So it, it's helping out both groups.
And it's a great connection. It'll be good to have that in place, so... Any other questions, council, for John or Corey?
Yes, I have a question. John, what are we gonna do about street trees? And is the 10-foot sack back from the back of curb to the trail going to leave room for tree plantings? Is it full of easements for utilities? What, what, what's the plan?
From what I understand, and Matt might be able to talk to this as well, is, is a lot of the trail moving back is due to, there is quite a bit of utilities in that corridor. There's a lot of private ones associated with, with Cortava coming up 86th Street there, a lot of electric in that. So planting trees as, within that right-of-way, there just didn't seem like there was much room at all to be able to do that based on utility. So the, the desire and that I think the most of the group is gonna be doing is, is more trees planted back behind and near those berms, berm areas.
And this is left up to the Homeowners Association?
The berm areas, yes.
Hmm. I don't know. I mean, I, we keep planting these great big white boulevards, and we don't plan for the tree plantings. So that kind of disappoints me, because tree plantings do a lot more things than just look pretty. They provide shade, they provide protection, there's a physical sense of security if you have trees between you and a trail on a busy walk. It tends to slow traffic down. I, I mean, I could come up with a million reasons why trees are important. So I'm sort of disappointed that we don't have plants, and I'm not saying we have to have a tree every 10 feet all along there, but to not have any plans for any shade trees along there at all is disappointing to me. And I would like to, you know, I'd like to think that there are some ways that we could move that trail around and get a space once in a while for, you know, three trees in a row. Again, I'm not saying it has to be a boulevard, but some trees along that road would be, not only, like I say, attractive, but also serve a lot of other safety purposes.
Yeah, I can, I can work with, with Matt and see. We have some specific areas where we meandered the trail a little bit, just to give it a little bit of, so it wasn't just a straight, straight-line trail. So we have some meanders. There may be some areas. As I said before, the, the concern with it is a fairly major utility corridor up along there. So we can take a look at where there may be opportunities to, to put some trees, whether it's between street and, and trail, or if it's just on the very backside of the, of the trail. We do have some easement areas in that as well. So we can definitely take a look at it. I'll work with Corey, I'll work with Matt, and we'll take a look and see where, where it's possible and what that may be able to look like.
Okay, I would encourage you to do that. I think that that, just adding a group of three or four trees in a row once in a while would add a lot to what I was talking about in terms of sense of safety, sense of separation, slowing traffic, windbreaks, shade, that would help a lot. So I appreciate if you would take a look where it meanders and see if you couldn't get some trees on both sides.
Sure.
Corey, this is Teresa, Finance Director. Maybe you've already talked about this with Matt Greiner and Dave Wilberding, and I'm only asking because of the insurance claims I've had to handle. The berm, your berm that you were showing, I don't know how that works, but we have had lots of claims of water flooding in that area, in that Foxborough area, and in those, in that area. And I'm just hoping that those berms are not just being put in there without thinking about where that's gonna divert all the water that's gonna come when we have gully washers, because I don't want new kinds of insurance claims. So that's just a, just a comment from, from my world, please.
Sure, no, we did take that into account. There are, it's not evident on this, you know, rendering, but there are small ditches on the backside of those berms that direct the water, you know, say down to this large drainage swell here. So we, we did take into account the existing topography and made sure that we weren't, you know, just putting a big dam there in the middle of where it would maybe possibly get out to the street under the current condition, so...
But are those, are those big areas there, areas, Dave Wilberding, are those areas that you're gonna already have to fix? Is David on the call, Cindy?
No, we don't have anything, we don't have anything planned in that particular area.
So that's not down from the park? That's not a continuation?
It's downstream of the park, but it's stable.
So far, it's stable. So this isn't gonna make that worse. That was my only fear, you guys. All right, thank you.
And actually, Teresa, within this project, and I know Corey mentioned the, some of the collectors that are, are going to be on, on the base of these berms, but we're also kind of cleaning up some of the ditches that were in existence there already, that some of them were clogged and, and that. So we'll be actually improving a lot of the, the flow of the water through that area through this project as well.
This is Councilmember Cope. I just want to kind of add my voice to both a thanks to, for John and the folks at HR Green for their work with the Neighborhood Association on this. I really appreciate it. You did mention the, the Neighborhood on 86th Street, which is the association just to the south of Green Meadows West. Have you been able to work with them as well on whatever, any issues that they've got or, or challenges, or everything good there as well?
Yeah, we seem to be good, and Corey can respond as well, but we seem to be good with them. We have a couple that we're, we're still looking at how we can potentially route the trail a little bit away from trees to help protect trees. But for the most part, everybody's on board with it. We haven't, it's been a long time since we've heard any kind of detractors for, for this project.
Yeah, and I believe, I believe one of the, one of the property owners that will need to be acquiring some right-of-way from, who, as John mentioned, were having some conversations about protecting trees. I believe they're on the, the Neighborhood Association for that development, too, so they've been very... the the Neighborhood Association for that development too. So um, they've been very excited to see the trail happen from a safety standpoint. Um, and it's just be working out some, see what we can do to get some trees protected to ultimately get the right-of-way acquired there.
Hey, this is Jim. Just a thought. Is there any planned uh, crosswalk or anything there by the park to get people from the east side of the road to the west side of the road?
Our our intent was to keep the the crossings of eighty-six, the east-west crossings at the signalized intersections. So it'd be just to the north up there at Windsor Parkway would be the safest spot for people to cross because they have that protection from the traffic signal to allow them to cross, you know, when traffic is proceeding. And, you know, the the crossing traffic is not um, is not underway at the same time.
This is Matt. Also, Corey and the the HR Green staff did look at all of the crossings that are currently there today at Shamberry, Windsor, and Crescent Chase. They will be updating the um, push buttons for the pedestrians so that they're ADA compliant with today's standards too. So that should help um, address some of those crossing concerns as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, thanks again, Corey and John for the update on this.
I think Corey mentioned it, but during the regular council meeting, we do have a consent item that is ordering construction to keep the project moving forward. So.
Sounds good. Okay, let's let's move on to the next discussion item, and that is the discussion of potential rezoning of fifty-six oh five Northwest One Hundredth to M one with restrictions.
Good evening, council. Um, hoping to obtain some preliminary feedback from the council on the rezoning potential rezoning fifty-six oh five Northwest One Hundredth. Uh, the property owners uh, are currently pursuing this in light of interest from American Fence, occupied by the building, which is currently vacant. Um, as opposed to trying to have Cindy go through all the different attachments here. Cindy, if you could just pull up the proposed site plan, I'll just comment that there is a vicinity map. This property is located immediately north of the Ameri- of the Mid-American Substation, uh, west of the Johnston Water Tower there. Uh, there's also a photo of the existing American Fence property and of the six-foot metal fencing material that they're proposing to use here. Uh, the property owners are hoping that American Fence could quickly move into this property. Uh, there are some time constraints here. Um, the property is currently zoned industrial commerce, which does prohibit outdoor storage. Uh, the use of American Fence otherwise is compatible with the IC district, and the adjoining properties to this are, for the most part, part of the West Park PUD, which allows IC uses as well, industrial commerce. Uh, so the primary conflict here is just the the outdoor storage that would be needed by American Fence. And we've also received some other inquiries on this property in the past, uh, asking for outdoor storage here. Uh, the building itself is uh, fairly industrial in nature, sort of matching the feel of the substation and the fenced-in water tower property and the the property across the street in Grimes, which has several cell towers there as well. Um, but the properties kind of adjoining that rest of the area are sort of higher-class office type uses. A number of buildings that have gone up in the last couple of years, the dental clinic, uh, doctor's clinic, and then the original three-story brick west office park building as well. Uh, to the east of these properties is multifamily, of which we've had a number of interests in the past of kind of expanding that multifamily further west, uh, which would sort of create a weird mesh of multifamily, these industrial uses and professional offices uses. So there's a lot of conflicting uses sort of proposed here, or at least a mix of uses, if not conflicting. Um, we're trying to kind of keep those uses aligned and buffered appropriately. Um, but other than the outdoor storage, um, staff doesn't have a lot of concern with the proposed use. Uh, we have discussed both with American Fence and the property owner, uh, some ways to potentially screen um, that outdoor storage. Um, and so there'd be some landscaping requirements that would be proposed by staff along with that fence, as well as pushing that fencing further east, um, to be more adjacent to the building and keeping it off of a hundredth street to a certain extent as well. Uh, there is a six-foot fence height restriction typically. And we'd also want to see any stacking of materials within that fenced-in area stay below that six-foot line or close to that. Uh, some of these details would need to be discussed and uh, further if this was to proceed. Uh, and then if it was moved to an M-one zoning classification, uh, we'd also be looking to restrict out more of the heavy industrial uses that were typically allowed in an M-one district. Uh, so again, this this evening, we're just looking to get some preliminary feedback from the council. Uh, the property owners have reached out to a number of the adjoining property owners, uh, and perhaps Rico can chime in with responses he's got to date. We did meet with the Seidenberg Group, uh, who also represents the three-story brick building there to the south. Um, did not receive any formal comment back from them yet, uh, but they did have some interest themselves in some of their vacant lots uh, about potential outdoor storage going forward as well. So a sort of a tentative, I guess, contemplation of this not necessarily being a bad thing. Uh, with that, Rico, if you or any of your colleagues wanted to provide any additional information, otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions. Clayton and David have also been working on this as well.
Yeah, thank you, Adam. And Todd Levine was supposed to be on here tonight for some reason, uh, having some technical difficulty getting through. But, uh, yeah, so we're just trying to get this uh, zoning changed over to M-one. Um, I guess some of the some of the things he wanted me to talk about. So they currently are down off of Lower Beaver, and they have just, uh, they're expanding and just, uh, are growing their facility. So they want to, uh, come over here and uh, they'd be adding over the next year or so, probably adding about twenty new employees. Uh, it's going to be a distribution facility. Um, they'd be adding some light steel fabrication and vinyl, uh, vinyl fence fabrication as well. Um, most of their employees currently live in or around Johnston, and uh, they're just, uh, yeah, they they want to stay in the area.
Rico, have you heard back from any of the other adjoining property owners at this point?
Uh, yes, we have heard back from quite a majority of them. Uh, uh, MCAD, we do have the, uh, so I don't know. Do you have the zoning petition? Over there?
Um, I have not received it. I'm not sure. Was it possibly sent to Clayton? Clayton may be.
Ah, yes, it was. Okay. Yeah, so we do have, uh, we've got MCAD, uh, Mid-American, Nelson Development, Farm Co., Polk County Land Co., uh, Tierney and Muller, uh, as well as Eric Grub. Um, so the majority of, uh, everyone we've spoken to has, uh, we haven't had any nays per se so far.
And I think that was, uh, the primary staff concern was just the potential for some conflict. There were some of those newer office buildings. So.
That is correct.
That was, you know, again, kind of the primary staff concerns. There might be some pushback on those and discouragement of future investment there. Glad to hear you haven't seen any of that today.
And uh, if uh, if you could, if you could unmute, uh, Marcus Pitts, I believe he has a couple of things to add as well.
Done.
Perfect. Thank you. No, I I, Adam, thanks for and thanks, councilman, everybody for your help on this. But, um, no, to answer your question, we we covered that. We reached out to, uh, Mike Nelson, uh, who was the original developer of West Park there to the south, the current owner of that three-story office building, and, um, he he signed that petition and in favor of the rezoning as well. So we we checked that box as well.
It sounds like you would be comfortable with the restrictions that Adam has discussed with us in terms of the uh, materials being lower than the screening and and some of the other limitations on the M-one zoning.
Yeah, we I defer to Todd on that, um, the which would be the new building owner. Um, but yeah, I I think Todd and Rico can speak to that as well, but I think Todd was willing to work through those um, those items with um, with you as the city and and have some sort of a, uh, you know, a development agreement in place, um, spelling out, you know, the the who's and the what's as far as what can go in the storage, um, how high, et cetera, et cetera. Because I think even on the fencing, there was some talk between that six and eight-foot fencing. Um, I don't know off the top of my head how fa- how high the fencing is both around the water tower and around the the Mid-American Station to the south. A water tower is screened, uh, the Mid-Am Station is unscreened. And then, um, as Adam pointed out as well, there is some unscreened fencing around some of those cell towers to the west. But this would definitely be a different, a different product in nature of that.
What exactly would be in that outside storage?
It would be a fencing.
Okay. Finished fencing that would be, you know, ready to be distributed. Is that the idea?
Yes, that is correct. And it would be, uh, this facility would also be a kind of a retail distribution hub as well.
Other questions from council?
Yeah, this is Councilman Cope. So in the in the fencing year is the, it's you're calling it fencing, but it's really a screen. I mean, it's it's not a see-through. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah, what what are the the product I've seen, as you can see on the screen there, it it literally is a solid, um, you know, it's a solid, uh, um, there's no, um, no availability to see through that. So, yeah, it would be a hundred percent screened, um, product.
Yeah, I think that looks good. I I.
Uh, Rico and Marcus, your objective is to have the property rezoned prior to the end of the year, uh, to meet those lease timelines. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, uh, we've got a purchase agreement in place. Um, obviously, you know, we bought this portfolio from, uh, um, from the Ruder family and, uh, um, the the tenant that was in place here, um, isn't, is, but I won't get into the detail, but they're they're no longer. So, um, you know, as you probably saw driving by, they had, uh, essentially broke down third-party trailers there, it seemed like, for the last several months. And so we worked to get those removed from there, uh, for a multitude of reasons. And now we're moved on, we've moved on from that tenant and, um, trying to get the the building sold to, um, Rico's client here.
Well, it's exciting to hear that American Fencing is doing well enough that they need to move into newer space, bigger space, and, uh, want to add some additional employees. So that's good news. Is there, do any council members have any concern about what's being proposed here?
Okay. I'm unmuted finally. Yeah, I I just have a couple of concerns with the school being right down the street and doing distribution with the noise, with the traffic. I mean, when American Fence down here with the semis coming in and out to unload, I just have a problem with this. It's not so much the look and the screening, it's it's the business itself. I'm a big fan of American Fence. I just think this is not a good spot for it. Just my opinion.
Well, I, this is Councilman Cope. I guess from just a different perspective, it I think it's far enough away from the school buildings, um, you know, and I would presume that most of the traffic and maybe Rico or Marcus could could jump in here would be heading south, not not north, um, uh, away once they're coming in into the facility. Um, you know, I I think the challenge of it is, is that, um, you know, we, you know, we, it's always, it's very difficult, I think, to tell a private property owner who can or they can't, you know, sell a building to. Um, and, um, I I think that this, given the use of this facility, um, allowing this type of rezoning makes sense. So.
Can can somebody address the question about the traffic patterns in and out of the, um, location?
I I mean, again, that's probably, this is Marcus, that's probably a better question for Todd to answer. But I I can, I I know from all previous talks and Rico, you can try him in, but it's the accessibility to the interstate is really the drive here and the short run to the south.
The entire drive is the accessibility to the interstate. I don't think you can have any any traffic going going the other way at all.
Was the issue of traffic or noise raised by any of the, uh, property owners in the area?
No, it was not.
This is Matt. Um, just wanted to remind everybody that this roadway is slated to be reconstructed, um, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four timeframe. You can see where the intersection left off with the four-lane segment. It is scheduled, um, to complete that segment up to sixty-second in the, uh, coming years. We'll we'll maintain traffic through there, uh, but just wanted to bring that up.
Well, Adam, remind us what the process is going forward. There would still be opportunity for, um, if there's any property owners or residents that have concerns about what's being proposed here, we would still have an opportunity to hear from them, right?
Correct. Um, it sounds like the the petition has been submitted, so there will be signage along on Hundredth as well as notifications sent out to the adjoining property owners, uh, and readings then through council. I, yeah, I think part of the reason we wanted to get a jump on it here this evening is um, the the objective to close before the the end of the year, which, uh, may require, uh, the waiving of a third reading to get that done, depending on how things proceed here. Um, but there would be at least two, uh, additional option or opportunities for folks to weigh in at the city council.
Well, I, uh, join in with Tom Cope this evening and say, you know, I I'm I'm comfortable with what's being proposed here. We haven't heard concerns from other property owners or or residents. Um, and I certainly appreciate what Councilman Evans has said regarding the schools, but it sounds like the traffic will be moving in the other direction from the schools. And with the, uh, you know, proposed road construction in the future, I think that that addresses perhaps some of the other traffic concerns that might arise as well. So we do have opportunity to hear from others. Um, but, uh, you know, I I agree. I think from what I'm seeing and hearing tonight, I think this is a a good place for American Fence to, uh, to relocate. Any other, any other comments or concerns?
Uh, no, just very much thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got, it's now past seven o'clock. We do have a couple of other items on the agenda. Um, Jim, what do you think?
Mayor, I think we should go ahead and move on to the regular council meeting. Um, and, uh, we'll, we can come back to these items under staff comments.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and close, uh, adjourn the work session for this evening, and we will reconvene in the regular council meeting, and we'll pick these up at the end. Thanks all.